Good evening, Mayor and council members. You are now live on YouTube and the time is 6:00 PM.
Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council, December thirteenth, 2021. We're going to be starting at six o'clock now with a closed session and seven o'clock is the regular session. Could I call the meeting to order? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember K?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Warner?
Here. Okay, thank you. How to participate in the meeting is given at the end of the agenda. And as we go along, the city clerk will tell people how to participate. So we're going to start before the closed session with an opportunity for the public to address us on the two closed session items. One is the conference with the legal counsel concerning existing litigation. And the second one is a threat to public services or facilities, a consultation with the police chief. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us before we get into closed session?
No comments have been received.
Okay, well then we'll close public comment and we'll leave this meeting and go to the closed session. And I may be a little late, I'm looking for the link, so I'll see you there in a moment. Bye.
Thank you for joining us today.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30 and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting. So with that, thirty minutes means that seven thirty-five will close out the first phase of the public comment. And the city clerk will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And also, the city clerk's office will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So with that, open the citizens forum at the beginning of the meeting. And do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Alan Heckman and Dennis Skilin. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. TB30 is on the line and we'll count you in at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, this is Marty with TB30, and I will count you in. It is now seven o'clock. You are ready?
Good.
Okay, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock Monday, December 13th, 2021. We're just coming back from a closed session. And can we have a roll call, please? I'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Councilmember Kik?
Sorry, having a problem unmuting. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here.
Could you now join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Could we have any, was there any report of action taken in the closed session?
City Attorney? Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I just want to let everyone know I'm reordering the agenda. Moving items seven two and seven dot three to be heard after four dot O, the citizens forum. Now, these items could impact the approval of item five dot one six, the salary schedule on the consent calendar, and therefore must be held earlier on the agenda. So now we're on to citizens forum. And you know, we, the process for participating in the media is explained at the end of the agenda, but now the city clerk will also explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting. So, city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during citizens forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Number two, agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow thirty minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then if it, if we need more time later, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting.
And I can't understand how this can be allowed to impact a current residence. Thank you.
There are no more requests to speak.
Okay, and with respect to the last comment, is there somebody we should contact specifically at the Planning Department or the could answer some of those questions?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and yes, he could directly call the Planning Department. If I are on duty, I can assist him with both what the rules are and we can see and make sure that the unity spoke about is following those rules and could also give background on the state legislation that required the city to change its local rules to permit those sorts of units.
Okay, thank you. I'll, no further comment from public forum, so I'll close the public forum. And we're now on to items seven dot two and three. And as you know, these are the mayor's items. So as you guys know, I met with the entire city council to receive direction on this item in a closed session and then met with each the city manager and city attorney. I completed the negotiations consistent with the city council direction and those contracts are now before you. And just before I ask for a motion on both of these contracts, I just want to point out that we're, city council is very pleased with the performance of our city manager and city attorney. And we're very pleased with the contracts we negotiated. So if anybody else would like to at this point make a motion, then we can have further comments after we have the motion in a second.
I'll move.
Okay, now you have to be, you have to move both items seven, two and three.
I move both items seven, one and seven, I'm sorry, seven, two and seven, three, that we approve them.
Okay, thank you. And
I second seven, two and seven, three.
And I'll just ask the city attorney, did I, is that sufficient motion clarity?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the motion for seven, two and three? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi, I, didn't we have to have public comment though? Did we miss that?
Oh, you're right.
That is true.
Yep, I missed, messed up. So why don't we open the, open the public comment of these two items and then before we finish the roll call. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on these two items?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment and thank you, Vice Mayor. Why don't we start again on, we've had the motion and the second on items two and three. Can we do the roll call, please? Just started the beginning?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
All right, so the motion for two and three passes unanimously and thank both of you again for your wonderful efforts here on behalf of the city. Okay, so now we're on to the consent calendar items. And these are, excuse me, usually, you know, routine in nature and act upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raise hand feature during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. So I'll start at this point. Do any of the council want to pull a particular item for, out of the normal course here? Don't see any. So could we have, does any member of the public wish to address us on the consent count, any item?
Mayor, no comments have been received. Oh, sorry, Mayor, you did just receive one comment.
Okay.
Your speaker is Carl Wenti. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Mr. Mayor, city council, staff of this awesome city of Livermore just got to the meeting, missed the fun part, missed the pledge of allegiance, did it on my own. I'm talking about the consent items and thus talking about the amount of government that flows behind, not behind the scenes because it is out front, but just the amount that goes on all the way through. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you to those who run and serve. Thank you to the city staff and the community of Livermore. As always, thank you to those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, those with a badge in the public safety, those that are keeping us safe from a fire standpoint, all the way through, just expressing appreciation. And then also just loud and proud of the people, for the people, by the people. And that means anybody that's listening out there leaning into community, finding places to serve, finding places to lean in to be part of and really take to heart what that means, of the people, by the people, for the people. Is it of the people, for the people, by the people? It's probably that, but the three remain in order matter if not. But anybody that's out there listening, lean in to make your government, your community, your world the best place it can be. Cheerio.
Okay, anyone else?
There are no more requests to speak, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment on the consent calendar. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Okay, moved in by Councilmember Banano, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Just a second. Councilmember Banano, you wish to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out item five, eleven, five dot eleven, which is the procurement of three additional electric vehicles. Just want to point out to folks that those are, the phasing in of electric vehicles replace our fossil fuel-based fleet is happening. It's happening in a very prescribed way in terms of vehicles being at the end of their life and being replaced with renewables. And I just wanted to make sure people know that that was happening and the infrastructure that goes along with those vehicles be part of the plan as well. And, and I think our staff is trying to move smartly through the course of replacing our vehicles. I just want to make sure people saw that that item was part of the consent calendar tonight.
Okay, thank, and I'd like to thank the members of the public that worked with us on that item as well. So with that, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi, item passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now, we have no public hearings and now we're matters for consideration. Item seven dot one, oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID-19 emergency with slides, I hope.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Just give me a moment to share my screen and get that up. All right, well, starting off this evening, we'll talk a little bit about the weather outside. So as of this evening, the National Weather Service has declared a flood watch to be in effect in the county of Alameda, including inside the corporate boundaries of the city of Livermore. And we do expect heavy rain today, this evening and tomorrow with flash flooding and possible debris flows in all of the typical low-lying areas within the city. So in preparation of that, I have instructed the Director of Public Works to make sure that we have appropriate crews standing by. And so we do have extra personnel who will be available all night tonight and through the day tomorrow and the next day to make sure that we appropriately respond to the emergency. For everybody who's listening, I would continue to recommend it is going to be a high wind and a very wet night. So if you are out and about, please be very careful as you're moving around because there may be stuff in places it doesn't belong, especially out in the public rights of way. So if people will take extra care, we'll make it through this heavy storm event without any further trauma. And with that, I'll lead into giving an update on the items that have changed since we were last together and had an update on this. So on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, a new variant was reported to the World Health Organization. It was first detected in Botswana and on November, number, on November fourteenth in South Africa. In November twenty-six, the World Health Organization named Omicron and classified it as a variant of concern. On November thirtieth, the United States designated Omicron as a variant of concern. And on December first, the first confirmed case of Omicron was identified. And so what that means for us is again, we are in the early learning phases of to deal with a new variant. But booster shots are now recommended for everyone who is sixteen years and older and they continue to be the best protection against severe illness. So public health officials are reminding all of us to test before and after gathering for the holidays, one to three days before and three to five days after, even if you don't have symptoms and you're going to a large family gathering that's outside your normal household. So we want everyone to remain safe over the holidays and take the appropriate precautions. Since the last time we were together, you'll remember that Alameda County has issued the indoor masking requirement in public spaces and has noted their framework for when that indoor masking requirement will be rescinded. And there are three parts to that. The first is that we reached the moderate or low transmission tier for three weeks. We are currently not in either of those tiers. So the clock on that one has not started. We bounced in and out of that. So we're close, but not quite there. COVID-19 hospitalizations in Alameda County are low and stable. And the county has provided additional direction for what low and stable means. And so that means that COVID patients have to be occupying fewer than three point three percent of total beds. And right now we're meeting that standard as just over two percent of seven-day average hospital beds are being allocated to COVID patients. And the third item there is the eighty percent of the county's total population or is fully vaccinated or eight weeks have passed since the COVID-19 vaccine has been authorized for five to eleven-year-olds. And eight weeks will be December twenty-ninth of this year by the calendar. And although we're getting closer to the eighty percent threshold, we're not quite there. We're just over seventy-five percent, but we continue to climb on a county-wide basis. Our local vaccine clinics have been incredibly successful over the past few weeks in particular, as we've added the five to eleven age group and over the past few months for some of our harder-to-reach populations. We've distributed more than four thousand one hundred vaccine doses held at clinics at Main Neeson, the Sunday Farmers Market and Robert Livermore Community Centers. And you see there are standing clinics, at least through the end of the year, include Access Community Health at the library every Tuesday and Thursday, at Stanford Healthcare, at Valley Care on East Stanley Boulevard, Monday, Thursday and Saturday for ages twelve and up, and Wednesday and Friday for ages five through eleven, and local pharmacies, CBS, Walgreens, Safeway, Rite Aid, et cetera. Many of those have appointments where you can get them even on the same day. So if you haven't gotten a vaccine or you haven't gotten that second dose, or if you're eligible for it and you haven't gotten a booster, we continue to recommend that people follow up on those items. Our seven-day rolling average of new COVID-19 cases per hundred thousand population, you see this stretches all the way back to June of last year. And you can see that we've had major spikes. We continue to have some activity down there. You see that both the Livermore line in the orangish color and the Alameda County in the bluish color. But you see that overall our total number of new cases remains relatively modest. In Livermore, seven-day average is six point one, and that's of course as of twelve, ten. And in Alameda County, on that same date, twelve, ten, the seven-day rolling average is four point three. And there is some volatility to those numbers, but they have remained over, you see the past few weeks relatively stable even after Thanksgiving. So the entire state is seeing a bit of a bump and we're seeing a little one, but not too bad yet. We expect to get more data, of course, as the days go on. This slide illustrates the dramatic difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated case rates. You'll see that that orange line at the top with that big spike that happened late this summer was primarily among our unvaccinated population and unvaccinated rates continued to be noticeably higher than vaccinated with the orange line being the case rates for unvaccinated, the black line being the composite between the two groups, essentially the total population, and blue being the case rate for a fully vaccinated. In Livermore, we have seventy-two and a half percent of our population fully vaccinated compared to seventy-seven point six at the county with a fully vaccinated with booster being just over thirty percent of the population in Livermore. And this data for Livermore is as of twelve, seven, and for Alameda County, it's as of twelve, eleven. And with that, I have a bill for questions.
Just before we go to questions, I'll ask, is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and now go to Councilmember Kik.
On the slide where it had the and, and, and or for the masking, it said total population, is that total eligible population? Five and up or total including under fives?
It's actually a total, total. So it's everybody. So you actually have to do better than eighty percent on all of those eligibles because we still do not have a vaccine for those who are younger than five.
Okay, great. That was my only clarifying question. Thank you.
Okay, I have one. It seems to me from what I'm reading and hearing is that the, there's, you know, the definition of fully vaxxed is evolving to include the booster. Do we anticipate that the county or, you know, the area health officers will revise that criteria that you put up in the light of Omicron and what is, how it's impacting people?
Well, predicting the future is sort of dangerous, but if based on past activities is when the virus has sort of changed course or there has been new developments, what we have seen is the health orders ultimately evolve to meet that risk. So I would expect that if our numbers climb sharply in response to Omicron or future variants, we'll see the county guidance continue to evolve and the state guidance continue to evolve on that. So, you know, I would think that there's some likelihood that there'll be changes if we actually see Omicron translating into case rates and hospitalizations.
Okay, and, you know, we're not going to be meeting again for, you know, until January. If there is some update, I can imagine you, you know, we'll post it on our website so that at least we'll know and that you'll let each of the council members know.
Absolutely. We'll continue to push that information out by, that comes from the county through our website and we'll certainly pass that along to all of the council members.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that. We've done seven dot two and three already. So now we're on to seven dot four, an appointment of Vice Mayor. And before we do that, I've got a plaque for our current Vice Mayor thanking her for the the service of the past year. Great plaque. I think you'll, you'll love it. And so thank you very much.
Can I get it now?
Well, you yeah, here you go.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. You know, someday we'll be doing these things in person again. So we'll, we'll get it to you soon. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you or you being the Vice Mayor and stepping in and did a great job. So thank you. So the next step, of course, is to appoint your replacement. And Councilmember Banano has agreed to fill that role for the coming year. So look forward to that. So thank you for for stepping up to that, the Vice Mayor Banano now.
It's an honor. Thank you.
It's an honor. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on to item, let's see, I guess, would we have public comment on that one? I just get to a point, so I don't, but all I ask is, is there any public comment on seven dot four?
No comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. Open and close that one. Seven dot five is appointment of council members to the City Council Subcommittee on Advisory Bodies for the period of January one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. The next in rotation would be Councilmember Kick and Councilmember Banano. Are both of you good with that appointment?
For the
Subcommittee on Advisory Bodies. So what you
I'm already there. I get to say it again. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, happy to.
Okay, good. Well, you got to check in, make sure you're still happy with that. So good. And so wanted to, let's see, who is the, just before that was Vice Mayor Monroe. So thank you for serving on that and now switching it up. I think that's correct. Is that, did I got that right? Okay, so now, any public comment on seven dot five?
No comments have been received.
Okay, open and close that. So now we're on to item seven dot six. It's the council member appointments to intergovernmental agencies. And at this point, I'll ask, you know, the inclination was to leave it as is and let each of you comment as to whether you're good with that or do we need to make some changes? Councilmember Kick.
So on LAAC, it has me as the primary and Councilmember Monroe as the alternate. But way back when, when that was made, we decided that she would be the primary and I would be the the alternate, but it looks like we didn't actually fix the piece of paper. So if the city clerk could go ahead and correct that, she already is the lead and I am the alternate. To just make sure that our records match our practice.
That was LCAC?
Yes, sorry, not LAAC, LCAC. There's too many acronyms.
Well, they've all got a lot of Ls in them too and Cs. Any other change? Oh, Councilmember Vice Mayor Banano.
Yes, I see a similar issue on the Lavma listing. You are still listed as a delegate and I'm a delegate and so is Councilmember Carling. So we just
So I should just be the alternate?
Correct. We just need to update it.
Okay, good catch. Any other items on this? Councilmember Monroe.
Yeah, I actually think LCAC, I'm the delegate and Vice Mayor Banano is the alternate. We had some conversations around that. Early on, I don't know that we've ever needed to invoke any alternates. But, yeah, memory on this, anybody?
Councilmember Monroe, this is your city clerk, Marie Weber. You are correct. It should be yourself and Councilmember Banano as the alternate.
I agree.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Kick, you're good with that? Okay, great. Any other comments on all the appointments? If not, if the city clerk could reflect them, that's what we'll do for the coming year. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak.
Okay.
The first speaker is Carl Wenti. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Mister Mayor and City Council, thank you again for what you do. I would encourage you to educate early and often at what all of these acronyms mean and what they do. Just waste no opportunity to what does that mean as it goes through. That's all. Just educating, educating us folk about these acronyms.
Oh, well, I'll just add a few words. Thank you for that comment. When we have our report out, we're about to go to item eight dot O. We have, I've asked and the council now does, is that for each of these subcommittees that we're on and what we attend, we have a spreadsheet that summarizes everything that we participated in. We have links to the agendas as well as, you know, some comments of things that are noteworthy. So we've been trying to do that, but I think what I would do is ask the city clerk to make sure there's a list of all of what we're assigned to and a full explanation of the of the titles, not just the acronyms, and then how people can find for those things that have websites and stand, you know, and agendas, if we have that link. So if that's in one place so people can easily see it, that would be good. It might already exist, but I'm not sure. So the, so we'll close the public comment on seven dot six. So we've got the assignments. And now we're on to council committee reports and matters initiated by the city managers, city attorney, staff and council members. And at this point, I'd like to ask, oh, see, city manager Mark Roberts has his hand up. He would like to make a few comments at this point.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I wanted to let you all know that I'm announcing that I'm going to retire from the city effective on June third of twenty twenty two. As you remember, as a part of my evaluation process, I let you know that after thirty five years with the city, I'd be retiring this next year. And the council has asked me to have staff assist you in designing a process to replace my position as a part of my goals for this coming year. So based on that direction, we've hired a recruiter to meet with you in closed session to get direction prior to opening the position for recruitment. I'm announcing my retirement early so that the council will be able to conclude a recruitment prior to my departure. Although I'm really looking forward to life after work, it'll be difficult for me to leave this organization. In addition to the amazing professionalism I encounter every day across the entire organization. Over my years with Livermore, I've been lucky enough to work with twenty four different council members and five different mayors who've all been committed to improving the quality of life for Livermore residents. I've held six different positions in four different departments here at the city. And I have to say that I'm truly impressed by what we've been able to accomplish over the decades. So however, I'm not leaving yet and we have a lot of work yet to accomplish over the next six months. I'm committed to assisting you through all this process, you all through this process. And I look forward to the coming months as we work through this transition. So I just wanted to thank you guys in particular as the sitting city council. I've appreciated our working environment. I've appreciated tremendously your respect for the work that we do together as a staff and as a council. Your, your staff is incredibly committed to this community. And I think that shows in all we do when we're responding to the community and to all of you. And I have to say, I, it's been an amazing ride here for thirty five years to be able to work for the city and to accomplish and be a part of so many different things. So with that, Honorable Mayor, I will turn it back over to you. But I wanted to start this evening off by, by letting you all know how proud I am to have served as your city manager. And I stand ready to implement any direction related to this process and anything else that we have to deal with over the next six months.
Well, thank you for that. I'm very sorry to hear the news, of course, but certainly understand the need to recognize the time moves on. So when you retire, you can, now you can run for council. So the, I just want to say that, you know, Mark, you know, you, I got on the council just as right after you were appointed. And being a newbie on the council at that time, and I certainly really appreciated all that I can learn from you and all you've done. And I, even after ten years, I'm still learning from you. So I'll be very sad to see you go, but I certainly understand it. And I just want to really thank you for everything you've done for this city. It's phenomenal. So I'll go first on the matters report out and then we'll go through our normal order and others can make comments as we go through this. I'll just say that in light of your announcement, we'll have a closed session on Thursday at seven o'clock for the council to come together and have a discussion of how we now proceed. And it's great that, Mark, you've given us plenty of time to do this in a very orderly fashion. So much appreciated. And just one more example of how great job you've done in meeting the city in such a professional manner. The various things that I've attended or listed in the the spreadsheet summary, well, one thing I would like to, a couple of things, one is we had a a great parade. That was wonderful to see everybody attending. So that was good. And then have with the mayor's conference in Alameda County, there's been a working technical group on the framework for dealing with homelessness. We had a joint meeting, all Alameda County mayors with the Alameda County supervisors to begin the discussion of that. Just want to say, you know, it'll, something has to be, will be submitted to the state in the next few months. But it's wonderful that the county and the mayors, all the cities are now coming together to align on the framework for dealing with it. So with that, let's see, who do I go next to is Councilmember Kick, I believe.
Yeah, so I have TVTC met a couple times with because we're working on passing our strategic extended Japan. I'm taking a meeting from home, which is rare, and Max is very upset about Mark leaving. So he wanted me to let you know that he's very sad. And because, because he thinks you do a great job. So, which I agree. And we also went to the holiday parade in which Max also joined and did lots of great waving. And again, sad to see you go, but happy that we're gonna still have you around. So maybe we'll see you trick or treating in the neighborhood next year.
Okay, up next is Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, congratulations, Mark, and best wishes. It's been a tremendous partnership from at least my point of view between the two of us. As I joined council in twenty, late twenty sixteen, your knowledge of the city and the processes and so on, I think has been remarkable. And a real learning experience for me. So best wishes to you as you move on to the next phase of your life. I know how challenging that can be when you retire from an organization where you spent several decades of your life and your whole career. So again, best wishes. Just a couple of things, in addition to the material that I put on the spreadsheet. I did participate in a December first webinar sponsored by the Lady of California Cities on sea level rise. It may not be so critical for Livermore, but certainly some of our colleagues in the, in the area or their jurisdictions are, this is front of mind to many of them. And it was interesting participating in that particular discussions. Taking quite a few climate meetings with Councilmember Banano over the last few weeks. That's moving along, the, the plan is moving along smartly and I think she and I have had some good comments about some of the implementation and and I'm looking forward to bringing it to the whole city council at some point in the next several months. Lastly, I also participated in the holiday parade, a great activity. I, I, I met, I asked several other people who were in attendance at the parade what they thought. And they had the same reaction that I did was they, they don't remember as many people being at a holiday parade as we had last Saturday. And I, that was certainly my reaction. And the number of kids that were lining the curb and waving to us, I thought was spectacular. And it was really quite an enjoyable evening. My grandson, Ali, was able to join me on the float. So that was a terrific opportunity for us to share that time together. So thank you. That's all. That's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe.
Well, I will pile on to the December fourth events, but I'm going to preface them with what I did before that. So this, this was a day where I, I, well, I started actually at services at my synagogue, but then I went on to go down to Milpitas where the Sua Dwali Group, which is the Hindu community in the Bay Area and then across the country has come together for acts of service. Sua means service. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And so this was attended by many other government officials. And it was a moment of light for the Hindu community. I immediately came from that, got into the parade, had a bunch of other kinds of lights for a very different holiday. Grabbed some dinner downtown because we can do that, wearing my mask, except when I was eating. Just saying, since we're back in mask wearing. And then went on to lighting the menorah that the Chabad organizations sponsors. So it really felt like a time of light as we are literally approaching the darkest part of the year in the northern hemisphere. So the, everything else is on the, I've listed, but I do have two items that I wanted to bring up as I guess matters initiated. One is Mr. Marling wanted to press us to move up to Brilliant one hundred with E B C E. It's something that's been on my mind. I was going to actually wait until next year to bring that up. But since he raised the question, I would like to see if we could see what, what it would take to do that, if I can get a couple of other head nods there. So I take it a head nod and a hand? Okay, it looks like we're good.
I just wanted to make a comment if I could. I, I, I think it is a measure already in the Climate Action Plan. So we can talk about when it would be implemented, but it is part of the new Climate Action Plan update.
Okay, well, one way or another, I wanted to make sure it got acknowledged. So however
So council member, just to clarify, what staff would do is bring back a staff report related to that for the council to consider and give direction on. Is that my, that's my understanding of what your direction is. Is that correct?
I think particularly given what Vice Mayor Banano said, yes, be, and then move forward from there. I mean, I, I, as I said, I was planning on bringing it up later in the year or in the, in the coming year. But this seemed like a good moment. So it sounds like things are aligning that way. And then, second of all, I too attended the rising waters, you know, the Bay, the Bay Area changing Bay Adapt event that Councilmember Carling attended. That, the Bay Adapt would like to have support for a regional strategy. Livermore is a little bit far from where we're, you know, we directly would be impacted by rising waters other than maybe having beachfront property. But people in Emeryville don't like that joke for some reason. But it is, it is a regional issue. And what I would like to have us do as a council is just look at what signing on to support with that would mean, both in terms of policy, but then also in terms of commitment to time, energy and resources. So again, if we could get, you know, if that could, could work. Could we get head nods on that? Looks like, yeah, okay. So, so is that, is that clear? What, what would we, what we want back?
Yes, we get a report back to you.
Great. And you know, I should have started as, as my colleagues did with thanking you I, for, for, for your time past and your time to come, because we're going to work you hard until June third. I, for, for, for your time passed and your time to come, because we're going to work you hard until June third. Before I even thought about running for office, the, you know, speaking to you as, as part of my interest in how cities worked was, was inspiring. And then I will just call out the one, one particular moment that was really fun, which was working with you as you were training me and wanted me as a newbie to show changes in how people think about housing and land use in cities. And so as a brand new council member, working with you on that was particularly fun. So thank you. I look forward to the next six months and then wish you well.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bonanno.
Yeah, I, I do not have a report of things I've done on committees because I was actually away for three weeks experiencing climate change firsthand. I was in Antarctica. And I have to tell you, since you brought up climate change, that there's no place on earth more where it's more apparent what's happening to our planet. The glaciers are disappearing in Antarctica at an astonishing rate. Sea level is rising. The phytoplactin, which is the bottom of the food chain and supports all the wildlife in that part of the world. The levels are decreasing very rapidly. So I was struck by the beauty of that part of our world, but also really very sobering what's happening there as well as California and the rest of our country and the rest of the world. So that's, it was so stunning. I'm, I'm left now speechless without anything more to say about that. So I will have a report about things I've done with respect to committees next time. Mark, I'm excited for you, sad for our city. Sorry that I haven't had longer to work, longer time to work with you myself. The fact that you've the testament to real leadership is when the leader could actually leave and the city wouldn't fall apart because you've left, you've put such good people in, in place for our city and they're doing such a great job. You will be sorely, sorely missed. I know one of the things I'll miss most about you is your absolutely brilliant sense of humor, which at just the right moment makes us laugh and just sort of just, just changes, changes the tone sometimes when it's most desperately needed. So to thank you for everything you've done. I'll look forward to the next six months. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I, I think, you know, Mark's been a tremendous resource for us all and along with a sense of humor is the, the vast trove of knowledge in his brain and that he can let us all know, you know, what's, what's the right thing to do very easily. So that will be, that will be missed, but as council member Monroe said, we've got another six months and we'll we'll make use of it. So with that, we're going to adjourn to a special city council closed session on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM and a regular city council member on January tenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM, both held virtually via Zoom. So good night.